You are here. I'm sorry. Okay, I suppose many of you are here because you saw that there was a personnel report. Unfortunately, this report is not with uh has has anything to do with Dr. Stringfellow or uh Tamara Gloucester. So this is a different personnel report. So if anyone is here in particular for any information, that investigation is still ongoing. And we hope to come to a resolution shortly. We'll be hopefully meeting with them and their attorneys next month. But as of right now, this meeting does not concern them at all. The personnel report is uh is uh has to concern another matter completely. Okay, we have the um I have a couple of announcements. There's a benefit basketball game which is happening tomorrow. The Harlem Wizards and the Norwich Teachers. That'll be held at NFA Norton Gym. Seven o'clock tomorrow evening. Doors open at six. You want tickets? Tickets start at fifteen dollars per at the Harlem Wizards webpage. Also this week, the Transition Academy at 30K Street will be holding an open house Thursday. I believe five to seven PM. And the city uh the all city all school art show will be held on Wednesday, May 15th. Kelly Auditorium. I believe that starts at five possibly. Please, I'll make further announcements at both the April and May regular meetings for that. Okay, John, if you could bring us into executive session? Okay, John, if you could bring us into executive session?
Absolutely.
Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-200, the Board of Education moves to go into an executive session to discuss the appointment and employment of Acting Superintendent and Acting Assistant Superintendent and to discuss a confidential attorney-client privileged communication regarding personnel investigation. Acting Superintendent Susan Lassard and Acting Assistant Superintendent Jamie Bender may be asked to participate in the executive session discussion.
And could I have a second on that motion? Christina Milton indicates second. Okay, and all in favor, I'll do a roll call since it is a Zoom meeting. Christine DiStasio?
Yes.
Christina Milton?
Yes.
John Iavino?
Yes.
Greg Perry?
Yes.
Heather Fowler?
Yes.
And I believe and myself is also a yes. I don't believe we have any of the other board members with us. Oh, Ella. Ella, you are here.
I am here, yes.
Okay. And your vote?
Yes.
Okay, it is unanimous. We will be into executive session. So we'll be retiring to another room, another Zoom room, and then we'll return with possible votes and motions. And if Susan Lassard could join and Jamie Bender could join us in the Zoom room. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-200, the Board of Education moves to go into an executive session to discuss the appointment and employment of Acting Superintendent and Acting Assistant Superintendent and to discuss a confidential attorney-client privileged communication regarding personnel investigation. Acting Superintendent Susan Lassard and Acting Assistant Superintendent Jamie Bender may be asked to participate in the executive session discussion.
And could I have a second on that motion? Christina Milton indicates second. Okay, and all in favor, I'll do a roll call since it is a Zoom meeting. Christine DiStasio?
Yes.
Christina Milton?
Yes.
John Iavino?
Yes.
Greg Perry?
Yes.
Heather Fowler?
Yes.
And I believe and myself is also a yes. I don't believe we have any of the other board members with us. Oh, Ella. Ella, you are here.
I am here, yes.
Okay. And your vote?
Yes.
Okay, it is unanimous. We will be into executive session. So we'll be retiring to another room, another Zoom room, and then we'll return with possible votes and motions. And if Susan Lassard could join and Jamie Bender could join us in the Zoom room. Thank you.
Man. Is that one overweight? That's like, funny?
There's some meaning.
You want gas? Garlic fry?
Okay, the time is seven forty-one. We are now out of executive session. We do have a couple of motions to consider. John, could you read the first motion, please?
Absolutely. I move that the board extend the contract of employment of Susan Lassard as acting superintendent through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, or at such time deemed necessary by the board, subject to the execution of a contract by the board chair on behalf of the board, and move further that the board chair be authorized to finalize and execute on behalf of the board an employment contract with Ms. Lassard for acting superintendent based on the terms discussed in executive session held on March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Christine Dostasio, second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, I'll go through the roll call. Greg?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Christina? Milton? Christina Milton? Can you hear me? No, Christine Dostasio.
Yes.
Um, did I get Heather Ella?
Yes.
And myself is also a yes. Christina Milton again? Can you hear me, Christina?
What's going on?
You didn't get Heather, though, Mark.
Did I get Heather?
Yeah, you got me. Oh, I'm sorry.
Where I got Heather, yeah. Yeah, Christina, did you say yes?
I'm texting her.
All right. Yeah, I don't know. Tonight, we're having internet difficulties for some reason. Just want to confirm that.
Yeah. I just. She can't hear any.
Can you hear me?
Saying she can't hear any of us, and she's not muted, so I don't know what happened.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. You're voting yes? All right, so Christina indicated that she's voted yes. It is unanimous. Okay, John, could you read the second motion, please?
Yes, sir. Move that the board authorize the acting superintendent of schools to extend the contract of employment of Jamie Bender as acting assistant superintendent through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, or at such time as deemed necessary by the board and subject to the execution of a contract by the acting superintendent on behalf of the board, and move further that the acting superintendent be authorized to negotiate, finalize, and execute on behalf of the board an employment contract with Ms. Bender for acting assistant superintendent based on the terms discussed in executive session held on March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, could I have a second on that motion, please?
This is Ella, I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All right, we'll start in reverse order. Ella?
Yes.
Christine Dostasio?
Yes.
Christina Milton? Can you hear me still or not?
I told it, it just nod.
All right. Yeah. Can you wave your hand or something to say, indicate that you're voting yes?
Oh, she's lost.
Can't hear me. All right, Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Greg?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. All right, Christina is indicating yes, okay. So it is unanimous on that. Okay, and then we we have another motion to, we have a final report on the on an investigation from a personnel complaint. This was made against the acting superintendent. And we had an FOI request from the complainant for the final report. So the board is is, well, we'll hear a motion from John on this.
Thank you.
John, could we hear that motion?
You sure can. Move that the board authorize the board chair to provide a copy of the investigation report regarding a personnel investigation discussed in executive session at the March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four special meeting to the complainant and coordinate any related follow-up issues or items with board counsel as may be necessary.
Okay, and could I have a second on this motion, please?
I second that.
Okay, second from Heather. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. Okay, Heather? How do you vote?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Christina Milton? Again, she still can't hear me? Okay.
No, she's nodding.
Okay. And Ella?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay.
You didn't ask me, Mark.
All right. Okay, again, it is unanimous. All right. Um. Do we, well, being a special meeting, we can't add any items to the agenda. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn?
And do I have a second?
Okay, or Greg?
All right, Christine, well, we'll give it to you, Christine. The second. Okay, and again, we'll do the roll call vote. Ella?
Yes.
Christine Dostasio?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Christine is indicating yes, and myself is also a yes. And we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Have a good night, everyone.
All right, if the press wants to, any comments for me, you can give me a call. Hopefully, you have my numbers.